I hereby call the board of this community of the District Two and School Board. This is Deckerson, who would please call the board.
This is Frederick here.
This is Erickson here.
Mr. Van Yanni here. Mr. Hamlin here. Mr. Madison here. Mr. Paulson here. Mr. Horowitz.
Here. Would everyone please rise and join me in a pleasure.
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on our agenda is public comments. The opportunity to speak to the board is provided for members of the public who have a question or comment on a general item. The board appreciates hearing from stakeholders and values your thoughts and comments and questions. The board strives to make its best decisions to the district in public input and a variety of venues is very often. The board is to protect the civility and the decorum of this meeting. Please be respectful for the duties of the board and democratic process in the comments center. Please use the microphone, state your name, and address your comments to the board. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Mr. Paulson will be timing. Uh, there is a speaker. At the two and a half minute mark, he will raise his hand. He'll let you know that you've got thirty seconds left, and then three minutes, I will note that the two minutes have been expired. Please be factual and courteous and do not include statements of personal disrespect or contempt to the members of the board's staff. If you feel a matter needs to be discussed in more detail, please, to attend the board's chance to chat, or present your comments to us in writing. First speaker I have signed up is Samaya Bon, is that... Did I say it correctly? I'm sorry.
Samia Bono.
Oh, Samia, sorry.
Thank you. Our name is Samia Bono. Hello, Mary Ann. Hello? Okay, here it is. Um, as I said, I'm Samia Bono, and I wanted to thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. Um, I'm here to take a chance to speak in support of continued efforts to build new facility for Jefferson Early Childhood Center. Uh, my son, Alex, was a Jefferson student for the past two years. Uh, he, he starts kindergarten this week. My husband and I feel so much gratitude towards the teachers and staff at Jefferson for the role that they played in preparing my son for this milestone. My son represents the type of kid that I believe the wider community may not always think of when they think of a Jefferson student. When you first meet Alex, the untrained and sometimes even the trained eye may not see the challenges he faces that have the potential to hinder his success in school. However, the skilled assessment team at Jefferson immediately recognizes his needs and provides him with a strong foundation to begin overcoming these challenges. I believe that his time at Jefferson will have a lasting impact on my son throughout his entire education. His team was able to find ways to help him before he felt too far behind his peers, before he became frustrated with school, and before his confidence was shaken. Jefferson benefits so many more kids than the general community might think, and the teachers and staff have the potential to benefit so many more, especially with an updated building. These kids really do deserve to be in an environment that is suitable for their ages and for their varying needs and challenges. The community has made do for long enough. I want to thank the board for all of their hard work thus far. It may be, it may go unnoticed by some, but I can see that the board is trying to get this job done while considering all of the different viewpoints and stakeholders. You've gone back to the drawing board now, time and time again, yet still, some only see this as an unnecessary cost for our community, no matter how we choose to do it. But from where I stand, all I see is a worthwhile and necessary investment in our collective future. We all benefit when we give each and every kid the best that are possible. There are times when it makes sense to forge ahead despite criticism and doubts. This is one of those times. Thank you for listening.
The next speaker I have signed up is Mayne Legler.
We live in a world in which we need to share responsibility. It's easy to say, "It's not my child, it's not my community, it's not my world, it's not my problem." Then there are those who see the need and respond. I consider those people my heroes. These words came from my childhood hero, Fred Rogers, or unknown to many as Mr. Rogers. For eight hundred and eighty-six episodes, that's over thirty years, Mr. Rogers has taught parents and children alike the values and morals of community and acceptance, which has transcended multiple generations. His words of wisdom and insight are critical and needed now, more than ever before. One of the greatest agiings of humankind is that each successive generation is invested in the welfare of each new generation. A teaching of Mr. Rogers that challenges us to step up and invest in our future. This community has an opportunity to be the heroes for our next generation of leaders. The board has supported these kids in this district, and I am pledging my support of you. I am committed to these kids, this school, and the inevitable success of this referendum, and I am not alone. Over the last few days, my neighbors have stepped up and supported Jefferson. There are those who have lived Jefferson, those who haven't, and those who simply want to see us succeed. However, some are opinion opposed. There is opposition in this district that aims to separate us, to pull us apart, seeking only to see differences in each other. There are no better words to retort to these falsely held ideologies than Mr. Rogers himself, simply stating how sad it is that we give up on people just like us. Empty ideas are no place in this community. However, the core values and teachings of Mr. Rogers that represent our community so need we do, and because of that, opposition will falter and fail in the face of these values. These are our children, this is our community, our world, and our problem. It is our responsibility to respond to this need, to band together and become heroes for these kids who are just like us. So to the Board of Education, thank you for supporting our students, and now it's our time to step up and support you.
The next speaker is John Sander.
Uh, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm here to address the issue of the lease, and I would like to speak to the people who can't be here tonight, all right? First of all, I came into the district in fifty-eight, settled in on one oh six North Wood Lawn, and found that the people directly to the east and directly to the west had special children. They didn't know what to do with them, so the little fellow on the east side was given a couple of bottles of pop, quartz, and snacks, and watched TV while his parents were at work every day. Nothing was real life. The little fellow behind me, I never got to see. All I could hear him do was scream, at least once or twice a day. Nothing was being done for him. When I joined the staff of Wheaton North, we had some special children and a very small cadre of teachers to work with them. One of the little people stood about up to my waist, beautiful little boy, blond-haired, and he learned a little something from the people he worked with. He learned how to dial nine-one-one. His neighbor collapsed of a heart attack on the lawn across the street from his house. He ran to the phone, dialed nine-one-one, and pretty soon an ambulance came. They saved his life. She had a heart attack, but they saved her. That little fellow was something that a lot of people would have ignored. He only stood about so high, but he saved the life. Now, in recent times, my daughter went to Uganda and found a young girl in what was supposed to be a bed, and they developed eye contact. She decided to adopt. And this is her daughter, my granddaughter, Mowa, with my granddaughter. Now, when she came to us, she couldn't talk, she couldn't walk, and in the time that she has been with us, she has learned to use a computer, and she can hold a conversation with that computer as fast as you can talk. She is now able to ride a bicycle. She couldn't walk before, and it seems like every year she's doing better. Now, for these people who are not here and able to express themselves, I hope that you go ahead with your lease and don't put your faith in another referendum, because by God, when we passed the referendum for Wheaton Warrenville, two votes, two votes, that's all of the margin we had. There's always a cadre of people that don't care much about special children and don't want more of them in Wheaton. Thank you.
Next speaker is Sharon Crookman.
Is it turned on? Okay, sorry. Wasn't funny not talking tonight. I was just coming because it's, um, it's kind of hard to get information about what's going on in our school district. I came last year, and that's when I learned about the leasing agreement, which was pretty much immediately after the referendum failed, which I just, that was first the draft part and then not the draft part, so, um, but I just, I have a child who did go to Jefferson in nineteen ninety-six, ninety-seven, for early intervention to help them get ready for kindergarten. He then had speech therapy, continued at Eastbrook School in a closet, which was a big closet. Um, he went on to high school, he was on the speech team, he won trophies, um, he works in sales, so he was successful, and I do think a lot of it had to do with this early intervention, getting him ready for school. But as an accountant, I have always kind of followed your numbers and your statistics, and I disagree with you saying sixty-eight percent of the people wanted this because your survey said, "Did you vote yes or no?", and then there's no distinction. You need to ask the people who voted no, why did they vote no? You can't lump all the yeses and nos together, as in, "They liked it." Because if everybody who voted yes is the only people who answered your survey, that's the only people who you know about. Um, just as with the Hubble Middle School, you did surveys, and you didn't do what the survey said, and I still have a letter from a school board member who said, "Why didn't you do what the survey said?", and is that because we know it's best? So, if you're asking the community, you continue to listen to the community. We've had two referendums, they failed, and a third referendum. I'm not sure of the cost of the referendums, but that's a cost for the community, too. So, I just, you know, I'm just speaking from people that I know who are tired of being asked and answered, and I don't, I don't know the solution, but my taxes have more than doubled since I've lived in District Two Hundred, and that's pretty hard to stomach, too, so, that's, you know, and not my praise value. I'm in the same house. Yes, we have a double, we have a boot, you know, I'm in the same house, and that, that's really hard, um, but that's all I'm saying.
Next speaker I have is Mary Ann Batong.
Good evening. This board is discussing this evening the approval of a resolution for providing for a new Jefferson. The main question I have, and many community members have for the board, is how are you going to pay for this without, one, increasing taxes, two, increasing debt, or, three, cutting programs and services for the students? The statement that you put out to the community after last Wednesday's board meeting is the typical MO of the district and school board, previous and current, subliminally intimidating or guilt-tripping the taxpayers, portraying yourselves as fiscal stewards of our money. And the statement that kind of stuck out to me is, "We are not willing to take any more valuable resources from three, four, and five-year-olds." I've said it before, and I will say it again, it isn't the building, but the people in the building, the people who are helping our children. Not that we don't need safe structures, not that we don't need secure structures, the majority of schools in District Two Hundred, many older than Jefferson, have been rehabbed and fixed up, and they're still standing, and all the children are doing very well. And to, to add to that, as Ms. Loy Akeno pointed out in the Citizens Advisory Committee meeting, which are not open to citizens, her quote was, "Buildings are in bad shape, but we are ranked number ten in the state." So which is it? The building or the people in the building? I do have to share with you another disconcerting statement that was made by either a district employee or a citizen in the closed-door Citizens Advisory Committee meetings. Somebody said, "Make parents feel pain," then referendum. Wow. The fact is District Two Hundred does not have a funding problem, they have a spending problem. Eighty percent of your budget is salary and benefits, which are way out of line with Main Street. And in usual fashion, once again, this board approved a contract you didn't read and we could not afford. The board needs to make cuts to the contracts. That is what is taking resources away from our three, four, five, ten, eleven, twelve-year-olds, okay? And you also need to cut out the bloat, the taxpayer-funded retirement dinners, supporting and giving to lobbying groups, particularly the AISB, that teaches you guys the bad behavior of borrowing and spending, free lunches, parties, ordering gifts from catalogs, PR marketing, video making. If this board and district would have done your job as fiscal stewards and kept the salaries and benefits in line with the hard-working taxpayers of District Two Hundred, all these years, there would be more than enough money to pay for maintaining existing buildings and building new buildings without further indebtedness to this community. Thank you.
The next speaker I have signed up is Joe Buckholz.
We don't need a mic, but I'll, I'll speak quieter, and you still can hear me. Um, I wanted to thank you and everyone that came tonight, and obviously thank the entire board for everything you do. We, as a community, chose you guys, some of you, to represent us as the community stakeholders, and congratulations for stepping in those positions. Yes, everything requires change, and we have to remember, and, you know, I wanted to write a bunch of stuff down, but every kid counts and every kid matters, be it a newborn all the way up to, you know, twenty-one, twenty-two years old, but we're still, as a community and as a school, responsible for those children, be it they're in special needs, be it they're in the top tier. We are responsible for them. We have taken that on. We have all chosen to live in the boundaries of District Two Hundred. We have made that decision. There's other options out there, but we have made the decision to live here. And making the decision to live here, it comes with the need to support. You know, you can, you choose to support what you have. I'm here as a parent, I'm here as a parent of four children, two that have graduated from District Two Hundred and two that are still here, starting in the first grade level all the way up. I'm here as a parent of two special needs children that have gotten all the way through high school. Um, one is going off to college next year. In first grade, that wasn't an option. In eighth grade, it wasn't an option. By eighth grade summer, after he was working with, eighth grade middle of the year, as he was working with all his caseworkers, he joined the ranks of high school, and because of all the support of the special needs, the staff, it's continuously supportive. We need buildings. Buildings are important. It's not just the staff, although the staff is the key. We need areas that they can teach in. I, I, I'm in the profession of schools and maintaining schools and churches. I've done it for thirty years. I've seen buildings, and I recognize buildings, and we're not asking for the Taj Mahal, we're asking for a piece of, a facility that can engage the children to the best, to offer them the services that we, as individuals that have chosen to live in District Two Hundred, would like for our, every child, every child counts. You know, I'm not sitting here and preaching, I'm asking for everyone's support. I'm asking for everyone's support for the needs and the benefits of our future leaders. They may be your son or daughter, or they may be your neighbor's son and daughter, like you said, or now your granddaughter, sir. How wonderful the story is that, to share what we can do. And we can do it right here, and we have done it for years, but we need facilities. And the facilities we're talking about right now is Jefferson. Please, if you hadn't had the opportunity, go visit Jefferson. Go visit the closet that is still there that they're teaching in. Go visit the converted rooms that aren't, you know, up to the standards that we, any of us would be proud of. You know, it's like, you know, so it's, it's something that we need and we need to dig deep into have. Inviting is not necessarily the support, it is. So every kid counts and every kid matters. Thank you.
The next speaker I have signed up is, I believe, Chris Ewing.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I have a few thoughts that I just wanted to share real quick, that I hope might be helpful as you're planning to head into the referendum. I don't claim to be an expert on this, but over the last year, I did have the opportunity to talk with a lot of people and people who are on different sides of this issue. I would just like to encourage you, if you're focusing on the market, if you're marketing the referendum, to focus on why the building that we have right now, even if it had been better maintained over the years, is still inadequate for today's needs, and to focus on why the building is necessary to the district for, for the sake of improving the quality of education. Ultimately, I think if those questions can't be answered, the building probably shouldn't be built. But I've heard you on this board over the last year, talking about needing more space. I've heard you talking about how you've been cited year after year by the state for not having a sufficient mix of children in the rooms. I've heard, I've heard talk about how the state law requires you to have facilities at Jefferson that have just are not possible with the current building. And I've also heard you talk about how renovating the existing building would be very costly due to the lead and the asbestos, and it wouldn't give the building, uh, it wouldn't give us a building that lasts, and it fits the current needs that we have well. So if you're arguing for replacing the building, that that will be the more responsible, long-term solution, I would encourage you to focus on that argument during the referendum. Ultimately, in the end, the argument of what happened in the past, some of the things we've heard here, isn't relevant. People, people have a right to know when their money is being spent responsibly, and we have a right to hold the board accountable for spending the money. But we all know that something needs to be done at Jefferson, and we all know what the condition of the building is like. So I just want to express my thanks and my gratitude to the board for all the hard work that you've all done. I, I've had the opportunity to watch this process and attend these meetings over the last year, and to see how much work has gone into everything. I know this process has been a lot of work, and I want to thank you for continuing on this, even when getting a bit frustrated.
The next speaker I signed up is Gregory Higgins.
I bought my own time. Districted members of the board, Superintendent Schiller, my name is Gregory Higgins, I'm an attorney, don't let that put you on the phone, okay, person? Uh, I'm an eighteen-year resident of the district, uh, I have one child in Jefferson, and I've just got two, uh, as a paid student. Uh, I've watched this process go on from afar, and I was about to get very engaged in it until you came up with the resolution, which we thought was going to go through, and I was quite exuded by it. I was quite dismayed by the efforts of one disgruntled person, failed to be one of your board members, uh, to put that to a halt, to the discredit of multitudes of others and to the detriment of multitudes of others in this community. People have talked about today all of the things that the school does not do, and all of the issues that it has, and all of the problems that you know well, and all of the issues that, uh, in resolutions that are possible, and what has been deemed to be the correct way to resolve it. But I want to talk about today, for purposes of disclosure for everybody in this room, is the things they don't talk about so much, uh, which is, we've got basically a tremendous amount of effort that all of you have put in, and I'm so thankful for. At the eleventh hour, one disgruntled person in our community has chosen to screw all that up. If you are somebody that only cares about money, and you don't care about the kids, you should care about that, because this person wasted a ton of these people's time and a ton of our money. If you are somebody that cares about our schooling and cares about our kids, then you should also care about that, too. Well, let's talk about what's going on. One disgruntled member basically decided to say, "Hey, with the help of a shadow group, which we don't know, put together a lawsuit." I care about the power. And if you read this lawsuit, it's very obvious that somebody with a great degree of skill and effort put together this lawsuit. It was filed by one individual, in pro se, it was filed by that just individual. Why? Who benefits? Under the guise of basically saying, "I'm here to support and protect the taxpayers." Now, something else going on. What is this shadow group supporting this person for? Who is it? Why are they coming in? And I don't remember Jan Shaw complaining about increases while her four kids went to school here. I don't remember when I was, I didn't have any kids here, and my taxes went up, and I paid for it anyway. And, you know, if you only care about money, care about this. People come to Wheaton, people come to this school district because we have good schools. People that have bad schools don't come here and affect your property values. A building that takes forever to fix, that takes a lot of effort to fix, costs us money, uh, more money. And the value is all you care about, and you're losing value. And if you don't care about money, then the cost and the downstream impact to our kids by having, not having the care that this school provides, saves us money downstream in the other schools. It saves effort, it saves infrastructure, it saves resources. And if you don't believe that, go do the research. And you know what? I'm going to be on this like a white-on rice from now on. So, members of the board, I greatly appreciate your efforts, and I'll say one last thing and I beg your indulgence for a moment. As a parent affected by this, you've been stopped by this terrible lawsuit by this one person. I'm one person. I can file a lawsuit based on your failure to resolve this problem. I greatly do not want to do that, but I could, and I can do so on behalf of myself and any other students affected. I don't want to do that. I'm, I'm, if this, if Shaw continues to do this and interpleting this, I'm going to interfere with her. I plan on basically interpleting in this lawsuit and finding out who is behind her really proposing this, how really, really this.
Thank you. And now move to action items. First action item is the approval of resolution authorizing the termination of a lease agreement among the district as less seen, ZB National Association Doing Businesses, Zion's Bank as less sore, and Amalgamated Bank of Chicago as Escrow Agent. Dr. Schuler.
Mr. Roman, really no additional comment on this agenda item, other than a reminder for the board that you entered into this lease agreement back in April as part of the solution around the Early Learning Center. Our recommendation this evening to terminate the lease agreement is based on, I think, the other proposed action item this evening, and that's the decision to put this project out to November referendum. Our intention, certainly behind the lease agreement, so just by way of summary, the lease agreement with Zion's Bank was a lease that was paid back out of operating funds. The language in the lease agreement was crystal clear. You had no authority to extend any additional property tax in support of the lease that was paid for out of your property tax dollars. Our objective moving forward is not to alter this finance principle as we're looking at the funding of the Early Learning Center, but in light of the decision to move to a referendum question in November, we believe it prudent for you to rescind this lease, and then in fact, if the referendum question is in fact approved by the community, you can enter into a new lease to fund it in exactly the same way. So that's the rationale and the history behind this agenda item.
Just for the board's understanding, I'm going to ask Mrs. Crackery to read the resolution title. And I'll ask for a motion in a second to approve the resolution, and then we will have a discussion before we vote. Okay? So Mrs. Crackery, would you please read the title to the resolution?
Lease Termination.
Good title, right.
Resolution authorizing the termination of a lease agreement among the district as less seen, ZB National Association Doing Business as Zion's Bank, a less sore, and Amalgamated Bank of Chicago as Escrow Agent.
I'll ask for a motion in a second to approve the resolution as read. Moved by Mr. Hanlon.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Paulson. Any comments or questions from the board members who came into the motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a few comments. I think, in certain respects, I feel this is preemptive. It's, you know, we're talking about the assumption that we're going to pass referendum, or pass resolution to file for a referendum. And again, we had a meeting last week, and I guess, I don't know that we went to that extent. We had a meeting in there. But, you know, I personally feel that I would almost prefer to litigate this item. Okay? I've been offended by, whether it's one or a small group of people or whatever. We've already spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to resolve this thing. We've had this topic going on for six years. You know, our mission is stated up there, educate and properly develop our students in a learning environment that they can accept. I just, again, I understand that it'll be expensive to litigate, okay? And if we, you know, there is a possibility we would not be successful in doing that, and it would delay any process further, and I recognize that problem. So I, but I am offended by the fact that we're at this stage, that we've spent so many dollars in planning and so on, and then last minute we get this. I would like the, whoever filed this, whether that individual actually, to incur the same kind of cost we would incur. Okay? So, you know, I guess I would, you know, before I vote on canceling this lease, you know, I personally feel that I'm offended by what's happened here. And again, I just, whatever. But, you know, the worst part about it, I know that's a stupid decision. I know that we have to make a decision tonight in order to get this thing moving. We have to pass a referendum to get it moving. I don't, I said, let me go back a minute. I don't believe that we would fail in litigation. I think every step we've taken is allowed by the statutes, and that's, you know, an acceptable thing. But practically speaking, it'll take nine months and hundreds of thousands of dollars to refute that. You know, I, when I hear the words spoken, what I've heard tonight and previously, about people who are objecting to this process. Number one, you know, I don't hear the word "students" coming out of there. And I believe that we have somewhere around ten percent to fifteen percent of our students in each class that attend Jefferson or involve with early learning. Is that a proper number of, if I take? Okay? So it's not, and it's not just purely special needs. It's speech therapy, you know, and other projects that basically prepare our students for future success. So I just, I feel that, you know, we, as a district, we had, we had a tap by the highest, or these tax levies amount. Rightfully so. We live in Wheaton, and there's very little industry in this town. But when we do comparative studies that we did through our financial advisor, or staff, we found that we were the fifth out of six districts in lowest cost. I don't know who's the one that is less, but the point is that we are very prudent. I also believe that we entered into a contract with our teachers within the last six months here, and that their raises were less than what I'm seeing in surrounding districts as they settle. And I believe that they were indirectly saying, yes, we support Jefferson, and we know what's coming out of operations. We're not cutting programs. We're going to accept less salary. And I think that's, that's an important process. So I guess, you know, I know that I will vote to cancel this lease, only because it's only the prudent thing to do. There's so many steps here. You know, we get called politicians. We're not politicians. We're people who care about our community. And it really upsets me that we, we have to fight this battle on and on and on, because I think we're missing the vote of what our mission and what our responsibilities are if we don't report enough.
Any comments, questions, board members?
Yeah, a question in regards to the comment on that our plan is still, if we go forward to referendum, if referendum passes, to still continue with the idea of lease agreement. Can you share with all of us and the people that are sitting here that other schools have used lease agreements as a way of...
Sure, yeah. A couple very recently in and around us. There's a neighboring district that just worked through a similar project, and started building through a lease agreement. Sunset Bridge up in North Shore just recently did a lease agreement project. So my sense is, I think for some of the varied reasons that you've heard highlighted within our community, that there is general concern around taxation and amount, that I think school districts have looked for other opportunities to fund facility project without just necessarily going to referendum and to a bond referendum that adds to the bonded interest money. So I've seen more conversation recently among school districts looking at new opportunities, but they're new, and new sometimes means that it takes a little while to be fully understood.
Any other questions, comments, or board members?
As many of you know, when I walked out, I was on vacation in the last, in July, and it was on, I think, July twenty-fourth, I had a call with Bob, girls were over the call, and they reported a review of Bob's in the last, and he wanted an interview with me as a board president, and I said, I have a half hour tomorrow morning for the lease for our next store, and so, and so he came in, he was sitting with me. And this is long before any lawsuits filed, just to be asked about this situation, and the process of component for the last ten months there, at every board meeting, and wanting communications with some of the community about this situation. And Bob summarized my conversation with him pretty well, and he simply left out one important factor, that in trying to determine the will of our residents in the district, we not only did an extensive survey after the election last April, and by then tell Bob that the four candidates who supported during the capital improvement vote in our schools, who supported the referendum, were the four candidates who won. And we defeated those candidates who were opposed to it. So that was another indication to me, as board president, that our community supports our schools, wants our capital improvement cards in the process of the week, and recognizes that we need to do something about Jefferson. Now, I understand why it depends on what you reported in paper, and that part, and how it says you would agree. So not only did we have that survey that we took after the election, we also had results from the, it indicated to me that the process we've been going through the last year or so, and proving the capital improvement work that we've accomplished this summer, we have on time to do next, next summer, and, you know, the future. Also looking at an alternative way to construct a new early childhood learning center that would not raise taxes, but that would be funded out of operational funds and out of the capital debt money that we received from State of Illinois several years ago, would be a viable alternative. So those are the type of things that we, as the board, have considered, as we march down this path. We believe the residents of the district recognize that we need to make capital improvements to our buildings, and those buildings include Jefferson. And the capital improvement process, we've decided it's the best way to go, it's the most cost-effective way to provide the best education for those students who are there in New York. So, and Dr. Schuler wisely reminded us, given this idea of this lease certificate, which other school districts have used successfully throughout the State of Illinois for a number of years. And the school code provides specifically for lease certificates, the school district to lease a building using lease certificates. So I agree with Jim here, that I have no doubt that we are in compliance with the school code, and I like that. And I agree with Jim here that I'd like to fight this. I've practiced law for thirty-two years. I've seen it drafted by, and I'm a third town show, I have a lot of towns, but the town I saw in the complaint, the way it's crafted, tells me that there's some, something behind Jim Shaw in that complaint. So we would be in the litigation battle. And where would we be, where is our crucial responsibility to spend money in this district? Is it ceremony defending litigation, that may take months or years to resolve, while we're still ready to build a new early childhood learning center? Or is it a process to go to the public again and move the resolution? This is the time on our action lines, and to proceed that way. And I think we all sat in those sessions, we heard the advice of the council that cannot be moved here without waiting to determine the final, which is certainly not going to do that. But the result of that advice is what we have for four as of now. So as much as I am disappointed that if we can't proceed with the boundary ceremony or a new early childhood learning center in this one state, it's just what we wanted to do, and it is in my heart, hearts to get to sitting right there.
Mr. Roman, may I make a couple comments? I'm in my eighth year here as a board member, and I've been a big advocate of finding balance in taxpayers and students, and I've been very consistent throughout. And as a member of the Finance Committee with Mr. Matheson, and I've, of my eight years, I've been on that, I think, six, quite frankly. This opportunity to fund a new Jefferson came across our desk, and we were presented with an alternative. And for the record, I've never been against a new early learning center. I've been against the funding mechanism that has traditionally added burden on the taxpayers. So as I, when we were presented with this by our outside investment firm, consulting firm, about a vehicle to achieve what I think most of us want, and not add a burden to the taxpayers, I embraced it. And, you know, forget about the legal matters of leases, legal or not, and this and the other, I viewed it from a lens of finance. And I was excited about the opportunity that we could deliver what this district has asked for, and that we could, and yet not add an additional burden on top to taxpayers, on their shoulders. And so that's why I was very proactive in supporting where we are today. And as much as I know there's some legal matters related to these action items, which, you know, kind of trump our, our situation, I just want, for the record, to know that while I've been an advocate for seven and a half years for taxpayers and students to try and find some balance, this was an opportunity for me to step forward and say, okay, we have, we have a matter we all, within reason and certainty, we will leave it, and that this will allow us to do that through operating funds and not add another burden on the shoulders of the taxpayers. So we are where we are, but at this time, clearly, it's in the district's best interest that we take action on these two items that are listed tonight, and hand the decision to the shareholders of this district. So I just wanted to go on record with regard to why I have been a very supportive person in this, in this effort over the last twelve months.
Any other comments, questions, board members? Take it back. We'll see if the board considers, or if it's our role. Did you clarify that statement?
The statement was that the yes vote is a vote to terminate, to get the term.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Crackery?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Gagniani?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Reluctantly, yes.
Mr. Roy, please?
Yes. We're going to do a lot of, on the table as we pass, and then we'll find out if we can proceed with the other side of the board. For now, proceed to the second act, action item, which is the approval of a resolution by the board of the party in suspicion of a proposition of building a new, new early childhood center to the voters of Moonley, New School District Number Two Hundred, Du Hightown, Illinois, at the general election in Du Hightown on November sixth, now with Mr. Schuler.
Mr. Roman, so the board has in front of you the pack conceiving a resolution that would authorize, a question on the November sixth ballot, the question that would appear on the ballot, which is incorporated in the resolution itself, is shall the Board of Education, we more than the community units, for District Two Hundred, Du Hightown, Illinois, build and equip a new early learning center without letting the separate structure property tax to finance the cost there on? So again, consistent with the discussion that we just had, that it would require authorization to build a new facility, it does not authorize the sale of bonds that it would be letting through the bonded interest money as other performance have generally incorporated.
Will follow the same process, going to follow through the third resolution, all in for a motion in a second to adopt the resolution, and after the motion in a second, we're going to have a session on a motion first. Mrs. Crackery, would you please read the oral resolution?
Felt question, resolution providing board requiring the submission of the proposition of building, equating a new early childhood center to the voters of the community units, School District Number Two Hundred, Du Hightown, Illinois, the general election is to be held on November sixth, two thousand and eighteen.
And a motion in a second to adopt the resolution as we're at the ballot. Move on, Mrs. Harrison.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Crackery. Any questions, comments, or board members?
I'd just like to start with acknowledging overall, we see support, we see, you know, our members of the audience and other friends, probably. Because understanding that we got put in the box here, today is on the last day that we can really take this action, like, to get a balance with other priorities we're facing in the future. So we're going to make a choice, um, rather than to, to hold our liberty in the process of talking. Regardless of what happens, that we all were committed, as you all know, to do the right thing for our students, and I'm not sure exactly what that outcome will be, but there are, will come up something that's going to be good for the students and unfair for the actors, but if I, if I could possibly, I have been on our test, I have worked at schools my entire life, I know the value of time when it comes to these things. I have to firmly believe that this was the right decision, this is our time, we got a great biz, and we're ready to go, and we got to put in the box. And so here we are, and we're going to take this hold and see how it goes. And we're going to take this over and see how it goes in November. And when that gets started, as far as the board, with all those kids who are in the right kind of learning environment, which is important, I'm sorry to comment a little bit earlier that the buildings don't matter. And I totally disagree with it, as our test, it's designing schools. The buildings aren't neutral. I've said this before in many different places, they're not neutral. They either support students and teachers with each other. And there's no neutral. And so, you know, I don't understand how people think that way that the buildings don't matter. Certainly, teachers are critical, members are critical about that. This is the most, I haven't, I haven't seen anything longer than this, James, so. So, I think we have to make a decision tonight that began in this time of day. And it's not a decision we thought we would be down on the year's own, but here we are.
Dr. Schuler, can you share a little bit, I mean, are we looking at now, because we're going out to November, we're not breaking ground this week, if we're going out to November, that we could be now inferring more costs to build this building during the middle of winter? I would assume that there's a premium that may well on there, or our bids are only good for a set amount of time, so we're going to have to go out to it again, would that happen in November? So, are we looking at, because we're delaying this, that there could be more costs coming to the cost of building a building?
And the numbers that are in the bid actions that the board received are guaranteed for forty-five days. This is what extends beyond the forty-five day window. We are still intending, so we, the board did not reject bid yet. You have the option of those contractors being able to hold those bid prices. But I will tell you, that's largely their choice to determine it. They do the fact that hold that bid price they submitted in the amount at forty-five day window. But our intent would certainly be to work with our contractors and see if they will, in fact, hold those prices. You are right, the fact that we're breaking ground in December, or late November, it's not as they do, breaking ground in August, for the three days time. So, there will be some winter conditions that are associated with construction of that building. I don't have exact costs from the board, exactly what that's going to be. That's certainly something that our tests and the construction manager that have worked to put together cost estimates with the board, based on how they did it, and were pretty darn good in cost estimates for you. But they will have to put that together. There will be some costs that are certainly not going to be.
And it was fifteen and about a half million dollars.
Absolutely, yeah.
Another question, Mr. Barrow. Yeah, just, just like a big comment. In this resolution, we do not see a dollar amount for the building of the early learning center. So, and I don't think, typically, that would pop up in a bond, kind of referendum, you know? And so, I guess for the record, and so the public knows it, because I am all about transparency. And I think, Dr. Schuler, you can comment tonight on where we stand right now as it relates to some of the things we've done in the Finance Committee, in the Board Number Two, that now they're dependent on the outcome of November sixth, the potential ramifications of the delay. But I think it's very important as we move forward that the public knows exactly that we're where we are today on that budgeted amount or that predictable amount that we're working with in the Finance Committee. And just so we can keep that number in front of the public and how transparent we can look forward. Would you comment tonight on that?
Sure. Just, this was a reminder for the board and for the public. The information around all the cost estimates and the actual bid prices that that was incorporated in our office at fifteen meeting agenda, so we know you didn't take action on approving the bids, the documents that they were so scattered out there for public consumption. And then, the lease agreement that the board authorized was a lease agreement not to exceed fifteen and a half million dollars for the construction of the new facility. With your budget that you received right before the project went out bid, so ninety-five percent of the construction documents complete, I think the projected cost was at fifteen million, six forty-three. The actual bid came in at fifteen million, twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars. So, and just as a reminder to the board of the bidding strategy, we created some alternatives that have been packaged to provide some flexibility should we need to make some adjustments in this whole building, even inside of that parameter that was established through the lease agreement. So, maybe that parameter is fifteen and a half million dollars or half million dollars under as of right now, with the bid guarantee and before last week's meeting.
And so, again, just somewhat redundant, I would just ask that, and maybe that's the point, I would like to communicate out to the public as we move through this process. I would just ask that you just, we're going to keep that number in front of the public so they know that this referendum question, all he cannot indicate the building cost or the estimated cost, that that number is ongoing in front of the public so they're completely, all the information so they can make an educated decision if we hold November sixth.
I have another comment or question. With the last referendum we held in our headquarters, there was a, on the average cost of a house, three hundred and thirty-five dollars. On our community, there was an amount of dollars that was going to be additional tax that would be paid on that new bonded debt that we would use. And I'm thinking that was three hundred dollars or something like that. I'm going to call the number right now, but it was an increase in what otherwise would be taxed if that referendum had passed. Okay, just to be clear, that this referendum will cause zero dollars of increase. In other words, we have two components of our levy. One is for operational money, that pays the salaries and things. And then, we have debt, bonded debt. And the bonded debt is basically what we tried to pass here, year to year ago. And that would have had an additional cost at that time, where this one will not. Okay, and I keep hearing people that I've talked to recently thinking that it will, and it will not. And we all are in agreement of that. Okay, so, basically, we're going to be using monies that we, you know, actually, monies that we've been setting aside for improvements of buildings, and Jefferson being one of those improvements. So, you know, this is part of our grand financial plan that we discussed heavily in the Finance Committee, that we're going to defer, not defer is the right word, but you know, prioritize monies that were otherwise been available for other fixes and so on to the early learning center. So, you know, I just, I can't try to overemphasize that, that point, that this is not going, literally going to increase debt. Now, we may go with a lease, we may go with some other kind of debt financing, if we assume this referendum passes, but it will, none of those ways will cause an increase in debt. You know, and for this purpose, just to make sure. Now, another question we have. We now are going to incur, we've already incurred whatever cost to cancel the lease, ten thousand dollars. What's, now we're going to not waste money, we're going to spend money in additionally to somehow communicate to the community, you know, things about this now referendum coming up. So, you know, that's another cost we're going to be incurring that is not helping our children in reality, you know, on a day-to-day basis. You know, and when I hear the words about, you know, we're misspending money, or, you know, we're going to learning sessions and so on, and I, you know, we're spending money doing this, that to me is an atrocity. So, and I just, I'm so impassioned, I guess, at this point. So, I just want to make it clear, though, no more taxes, and that's the biggest issue, so, thank you.
Yeah, just want to explain, I know what you're talking about, and I believe in the justice, but the proofing thing to do, you had indicated that there is, that there are, of course, problems, the losses that are much larger than the, uh, most of us now. We just speak here last week, we did not recognize the, by mistake, the settings was made here for a lot of people. And that's as an indicator that there are people outside who are trying to influence this decision. If you go and look at that speaker, he is the founder and author of the student news dot com. And he has a white paper on the talks, calls for the sanction of the government education hours. That scares me.
Bruno Panera.
I don't want to talk about this name, I'm just saying, you can watch the table, but that means there's money, and big money, and people who are going to continue to influence this. And if we can deal with this in the election in three months or four months, or at the time it is, versus multiple years, which we will be tied up in lawsuit that long, I believe, into funding of it, I will refer to that. So, I do believe this proofing can be done, and we're pushing our citizens to research and beware of those influences trying to speak out of that, as this is the area of access.
Any other comments or questions, board members? Just a quick one. Our referendum laws, like to fifty-four percent of the six percent. If I assume that at least ten percent of those voted against the referendum, and just to give them a higher chance to vote for the new board, capital improvements to our schools,